Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Please welcome Mr. President to make sure all is switched off or on. There's regret I have to remember about the death of two former colleagues. Elder councillor Alderman Toft died for the weekend. John representing the Asian Division on the council and was chairman from 1973 to 75. And this morning was just being notified at the death of councillor Bill Furby. A lot of you will remember Bill. He was chairman of the council from 1981 to 83. He was only called. We have no further intuitions to funeral by virtue of life stamp and in its science for the life insurance. I'll put first item of administration. Now the second issue.
Second minutes, Chair.
Can I ask councillor to agree minutes? Item two, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest in relation to any items on the agenda? Non-recorded. Item three, chairmen's announcements. First of all, I am pleased to inform the council that Business Durham has recently been awarded a Harding Commander's Certificate in the improvement business environment category of the Enterprise and Britain Awards in 2017, which supports the government's drive to increase entrepreneurial activity in the UK. I would hand over to councillor Karl Marshall to tell you before the award, before it's presented.
Thanks, Chair. In November, I was delighted to attend the House of Parliament of Sarah Staveley to receive the Enterprise and Britain Award. This award was presented in Business Durham for the work laid due to improve the environment in County Durham that supports business and creates economic growth. The Enterprise and Britain Awards are part of the government's national drive to support entrepreneurial activity. They celebrate the work of public sector organisations that support and encourage entrepreneurism across the UK. As you know, Business Durham is an economic development organisation in County Durham and works on behalf of the council to deliver business and economic growth. The award is national recognition of the brilliant work that Business Durham does on behalf of the council and reflects the hard work and dedication of the team that goes to do it. I'd also like to put on my record thanks and appreciation officers right across the council. This council takes a flexible, innovative and corporate approach to support business growth and jobs. And it's this collective approach across our directors to support business that helps us to get stuck during the new Durham. I'd like to take this opportunity to highlight the members' some of the many achievements the judge and panel recognise. These include the work Business Durham does in managing the council's property portfolio, with over 500 industrial and office units across the county, and increasing opportunities and hours for 85% providing space for over 300 companies and employing over 1600 people. The role played in developing the newest addition of Business Durham's portfolio, the prestigious offices at Salvesthouse. Salves provides offices for new and grown businesses as well as collaborative workspace and hot desk facilities at this key location in the area. And secured and funded to create a Durham City incubator facility within Salvesthouse. This is a unique partnership with Durham University and New College Durham to nurture some of our brightest talents and help them develop their new businesses and new ideas. By providing the right environment to help young companies progress, we hope to make sure our talented individuals stay here in Durham. The support of all the region's only science park at Net Park, from 20 companies to 37 companies, now employing 420 people. Net Park is the only science park in the UK that has two catapult centres of excellence and has also four national innovation centres. It's great to see the new explorer buildings going and the new access road going in, providing further space for growth and expansion. The judge has also recognised the fact Business Durham engages with over 1000 businesses every year and has supported over 300 growth projects. Business Durham has facilitated the creation and safety of over 5100 jobs over the past three years alone, helping 32 new companies to recreate County Durham, including Tatchy Vale Europe Vehicle, which now employs 1400 people, and Rescue created 1200 jobs in East Durham. Attracting Tatchy Vale Europe to the county has led to further opportunities for businesses in the rail sector, supplying 12 County Durham businesses over the last few years, diversifying the rail sector and creating jobs. Rowanshun Durham Smart County, a groundbreaking project that brings business and health organisations together to find innovative solutions to healthcare problems such as social isolation. Support thousands of young people in County Durham to develop enterprise skills through the High and Garden, Future Business Margins, Enterprise Competition, and through a programme of activity to develop enterprise, science, technology and maths skills to equip our young people for the jobs of the future chair. And finally establishing a 20 million financed Durham venture capital to support businesses as they scale up and employ more people right here in County Durham. And you'll have seen that the fund has recently made its first two investments with several more in the pipeline. Grow and diversify and develop County Durham's economy is a much longer term journey. This is why the work of Business Durham is so important. We really are starting to see the impact of the investment this council has made. Durham's profile is a place where businesses doing is increasing. Already Salvesthouse is over 50% full and has attracted considerable interest in the development of Net Park and even completion, which you have the opportunity to visit in January through our visit organised by our viewing groupie chair. Placing the county in a very strong position to attract more science, technology companies and provide more high value jobs. It makes me immensely proud that Business Durham have been recognised on a national scale for this important work and I'm delighted that the chairman herself is able to present this award today to representatives from the team who carry out all this magnificent work. Colleagues, I'm sure you'll join us in showing our appreciation of the Business Durham team.
Secondly, can I remind the council about the awareness sessions taking place in Members' Resource Centre. The aim of these sessions is to assist with the move towards paperless committee meetings with full training and support of all members. And can I ask those members who have not had the opportunity to attend any of the sessions to drop them before five o'clock today? If you're unable to attend any of the sessions, please contact Members' Support who would be more than happy to help you. And finally, can I remind the report? At the end of this council, who could follow immediately on, was an extraordinary meeting which takes place following the conclusion of this meeting. And can I ask members just to remain in the chamber while I take this bit? On to item four, ladies' reports. Can I invite the leader, please, to present his report?
Thank you very much, Chair. My main focus of paperless offices still work in progress. Can I start my report this month, Chair, by congratulating and thanking everyone involved with the recent Lumiere in Durham, which had attractive record numbers, 240,000 over the four nights. Although the economic assessment still has to come, stunning images from Durham precincts across the world. And it was a pleasure to welcome so many visitors from across the UK and internationally. This included County Durham hosting a three day international lighting Lucy conference, which includes delegations from cities in China, South Korea, Russia and Scandinavia, many who, you know, myself, raised a meet over those days, as well as holding a one day Lumiere Durham conference entitled, 'Who are we in the wrong period?' As ever, it was fantastic to see so many people on the streets enjoying themselves and many of the 29 licensed installations were delivered on November. So if the famous council chambers, technology, and creative, then enjoy it, thanks.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Please welcome Mr. President to make sure all is switched off or on. There's regret I have to remember about the death of two former colleagues. Elder councillor Alderman Toft died for the weekend. John representing the Asian Division on the council and was chairman from 1973 to 75. And this morning was just being notified at the death of councillor Bill Furby. A lot of you will remember Bill. He was chairman of the council from 1981 to 83. He was only called. We have no further intuitions to funeral by virtue of life stamp and in its science for the life insurance. I'll put first item of administration. Can I remove her, the minister, please? Now the second issue.
Second minutes, Chair.
Can I ask councillor to agree minutes? Item two, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest in relation to any items on the agenda? Non-recorded. Item three, chairmen's announcements. First of all, I am pleased to inform the council that Business Durham has recently been awarded a Harding Commander's Certificate in the improvement business environment category of the Enterprise and Britain Awards in 2017, which supports the government's drive to increase entrepreneurial activity in the UK.
So immediately after Lumiere finished, I wrote to the media to thank everyone involved in ensuring huge crowds were safe, including, as you can see on the end of the video there, partners from Durham Constabulary, Durham Department of Fire and Rescue Service, our own staff, our fantastic volunteers, some who we saw on the film, our funders, including Hearts Council England, business partners, including the university and cathedral, and of course, Artichoke themselves. It was a tremendous team effort by an ever larger number of people, which was two years in the making and preparation. But, Chair, I'm sure everyone would agree, well worth the wait. So thank you again to everybody who's involved. Chair, can I also congratulate all those who were successful at recent Environment's Awards, Festival, Non-Awards and Durham City Retail Awards, all of which were held during the month of November. Finally, can I take this opportunity of wishing everyone a Merry Christmas and look forward to a Happy New Year?
Do any members have any questions on the report? Can I ask councillor to note the report, please? Item five, questions from area action partnerships. Can I ask the head of the Legal and Democratic Services to explain the procedure regarding AAP questions, please?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members. Questions will be received from the area action partnerships and these will be displayed in turn on the screen. The chairman will invite the AAP representatives to ask their question and the leader or relevant portfolio holder will respond. There will be no discussion on the matter once the question has been answered and no supplementary questions are allowed. Replies will also be posted on the council website.
Thank you. The first question that's being submitted is being submitted by Great Airway, the Midranch Area Action Partnership, handed by Brian Wiley, the AAP coordinator. Do you ask the question, please?
Thank you, Chair. Whilst the area action partnership acknowledges the efforts of the council to tackle unsightly land, we understand that in small number cases, it can take three to five months for a thorough process of community protection warning, then community protection notice, to enforce safe agreements with lit yards and gardens and sub housing properties. The area action partnership understands that there are many challenges facing the council given the current financial climate. However, we're asking for affordable and strategic housing and assets if there are any further measures appropriate to use with housing partners to help tackle these unsightly and often unsightly conditions.
Can I ask the fourth forwarding order, councillor Kevin Short, please?
Thank you, Chair. At the beginning of my thought, I was really quickly thinking of your question. As a council, we share the concern around organic loss and problems. But all we are aware of slightly but also cause risks to public health and harmful pests and also risk fire risks. There's a right to medication when our local borders, environmental health and unbridled lies combat the problem. The simplest approach and least costly is engaging with the occupant. In many instances, this does the job, also provides opportunity to provide risk management services to incur more responsibility and disposal. Beyond education where organic motion risk is present, the road is still intense and it is 48 hours. For all forms of risk, there are warnings issued in community protection orders all of our offices. But the timescale of the age is one way. Our warnings issued, 3,448 in the last year, and 90% of ways resulting in compliance at the road's old warning stage, will be 10% when caught or may issue with the fine. It is important to recognise this concern and work on the ground. I do acknowledge that in relatively small number of instances, enforcement can take some time. This can be resolved with many factors, tracing chain ownership, the intention moving in, and helping the worst to move forward their own, or this issue might form part of a more complex case work. We are paying the work that has associations on this market, also utilise their tendency agreements to help ensure responsible behaviour. We are already working on the County Durham Awards to carry out concessions and incentives. It is also that over a couple of months, we will be looking to promote this partnership to push more widely, including integrated in the future, the area.
And from there, councillor Short. The second question comes from the four together area action partnerships. And can I invite the AAP coordinator, Lee Copeland, to ask a question, please?
Thank you, Chair. Since 2014, the four area action partnerships have each one began to grant £10,000 from Durham County Council to tackle welfare revolving policy issues. These grants have provided the APs with opportunities to develop community based projects to enable to support families and individuals in their experience in hardship. This portfolio involves the social inclusion, how you can bring your role to find out what local projects are being developed, how these are helping those affected by a local and reforming poverty, and how learning from such projects can be shared across the county to benefit others.
Thank you for the question. Can I invite the portfolio board, councillor Sirtease, to answer, please?
Thank you, Chair. Chair, watching the councillor Jay Brown is unable to attend today, so I will respond on her behalf to the next question, the social inclusion. On behalf of councillor Jay Brown, I have an excellent question, Chair. Residents of the county continue to struggle with open source programming and local reporting, and the last thing they want to do is session, which is they now counting on this region's corporate governance. These impacts put across all of the council's strategic areas and implications across the entire council. It was therefore rightly important that the council continues to respond and provide essential support to the town. The council has recognised this as one of its three priorities and as the council's four four year award for social inclusion, councillor Brown and myself will be working to ensure that we, as our party, continue to act together to ensure our most vulnerable households are properly supported. This portfolio of water for this area, councillor Brown has learned about the terms of shikpan and how our residents are facing up to these challenges and what all the council and its partners spend to do to help. By example, we're having a lot of dear paggings and raving things around the world like the universal pandemic. Councillor Brown has taken as many of the trade positions he can to make the use of our biggest of those teams to staff local groups and organisations, which do the project services and initiatives and offer the type of help and support necessary to local residents and communities to help them afford the welfare required for poverty. This has included councillor Brown basically making the coordinators to write down all about the excellent work our APs have done to make us use the £10,000 grant from the council, whilst ensuring it is reaching the most important name in the industry, the trade and social performance for residents and locals in the city. Our local councillor Brown is very heartful by a passion and enthusiasm of these things that took us down the road to help our residents in particularly learning about various projects about the issues of holidaying and the private children. There are excellent examples of projects that help them show a local children continue to be safe since start of the mail during these global days. Through the council's public action steering room chaired by the Royal Donald, director of transformational partnerships, and the child public work group which is chaired by Margaret Bellis, public director of children and young living services, we will soon starting to look at how we can share the learning from these projects. Working in the AAP will be, we will be identifying opportunities for good practice for these projects and the access to existing projects in the parts of the county which are being delivered around holiday activities. For example, we will be exploring how we can use these projects to make existing projects the issues of part of working for us at the London and the London. I'm also pleased to announce the allocation of additional £10,000 for local assistance from the three chair in the 1890s. This will enable us to continue to expand on the exit plan of all renovations within that AP to also classify local and public poverty. And we would encourage partners to share any ideas that they may have for existing projects with their AAP. Last, just one of many examples, if the local councillor Brown will be involved in this call for your role and was a member of the public action steering room and the child public work group, she will get you a public event that is subject to the development of this agenda for buses. Our JAM committee members will get in touch with councillor Brown so that they know what issues your local residents are facing, what to discuss your ideas and what more we can do. Councillor Brown has already got your local APs and will continue to speak very freely with them to share our experiences in front of them. If you want to share your local APs, you have to inform them what is happening in Durham, which in turn will help your APs in updating several of them. Should therefore welcome any questions, comments, feedback and suggestions you may have now or will have. Of the year, I'd like to hear your question.
Thank you, Copeland, Sirtease. And that concludes questions from the AAP. Can I thank the AAPs for submitting their questions and the coordinator is withstanding, thank you. Item agenda number six, questions from the public. Can I ask the head of legal and democratic services to explain the procedure regarding the questions, please?
Thank you, Chair. We have one question received from the public. The questioner is not in attendance to ask their question today, therefore the question will be displayed in the screen and will be provided after the meeting. And again, in the slot will be posted on the council's website.
Thank you for that. Item six, questions from the public. Sorry, petitions, there are no petitions for consideration. I'd like to report from the cabinets.
Thank you, Chair. Can I formally table the report from Cabinet's Project from December 15th, November 2017, which included the variety of items as set out in pages across the members this morning on pages nine to 80 of the table report, Chair?
Councillor. No questions have been submitted in advance. Do any members have any questions on the report, please? And no questions. Can I ask councillor to note the report from the cabinet? Item nine, media review of their report on Treasury Management for the period to 30th of September 2017. And can I ask the corporate director of resources to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members. This report sets up information on the council's treasury activity at the half year point and also seeks approval to amend to be an essential strategy, informed. The report is prepared according to the SIF for corporate practice on treasury management. Sets up the areas which will be reported in the frequency reporting for the council. Details of capital expenditure set out in paragraph nine of the report show revisions of the capital programmes agreed by council. We are importing a revised capital estimate of £142.7 million for 1780. Details of the revised budget report are covered on the table. The details of the capital programme will be financed to show in paragraph 13, which shows estimated borrowing rate of £63 million. This reflects the revised capital programme. Details of the capital financing requirement is set out in paragraph 16, which is being prepared according to the relevant capital accounting requirements. It is due to me, considering shield of debt is only used for capital purposes. The position for 1780 is set out in paragraph 80. The council's potential indicates a showing in paragraph 20 and a well within relevant to the big set. Borrowing strategy is set out in paragraph 21, compares the council's borrowing structure to the mobile list of the structure to the level of the same treasury management strategy, and there are no issues to report in this regard. In terms of the investments, they are proposing to amend the investment strategy to spare investment risks across a wide range of problems, and to allow investment in businesses in County Durham to encourage regeneration and economic development. Paragraph twenty-eight sets out the shares which are to increase the monetary limit for equity sharehold from £21 million to £30 million, increase the investment limit for business from £11 million to £20 million, to allow investment in property forms, and that all £50 million total, with £25 million in individual fund. This is a landmark course for maximising income. Can I assure the council that no new investments will be agreed unless appropriate due diligence to be undertaken? In closing, we report also the details of the council's shareholder into the 31st of August 2017, and 30th of September 2017. Benchmark information is shown in paragraph thirty-four, an update on historical and outstanding bank position is shown in the report. Recommendations set out in paragraph four, Chairman?
Thank you for that, John. Can I have a good report, please?
Thank you, Chairman. This report sets out the new year position of our treasury management activity. It is important that we manage our treasury management activity in line with best practice guides. Before the SIF report, the charter certificate will be financed in the county, called the practice on treasury management and secondary investment reporting strategy, and the recommendations in the report are in line with the code. I believe it is more important than ever that we are transparent with the public about how we manage our resources, and demonstrate that we are managing our borrowing activities thoroughly. In this report, we are proposing amendments to the investment strategy concerning effects on investment requirements going forward. This includes increasing limits for equity investments and amendment for property fund investments, as we look to develop longer term investment in terms of no cash, whilst continuing to manage risk effects. I welcome these changes, as we, like many other councils, are seeking ways of increasing investment returns whilst minimising risk to protect from line services. It is important that we get the balance right, and I am assured, as the director has already said, that full due diligence will be undertaken on new investment opportunities. In terms of current performance, it is based in a no can investment in progress exit budget, managing the effective management of current balances by the council in high terms from our commercial activity. The report sets out a warning requirement in detail, and I'm also assured that we are operating within our conventional indicator limits for borrowing the front capital programme. Chairman, I'll have you move the recommendations in paragraph four of the report.
Thank you, Councilor. Second of these?
Thank you, Chairman. I'll move the second recommendations.
There's three speakers at the moment to ask questions. First one, Councilor Craig Martinsley.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to ask two questions about the revised investment strategy on page 24. Point 27A says that part of the purpose is to balance and diversify the council's investment portfolio by spreading the investment risk. How do we achieve this, when the proposal is to increase the amount available to be invested in individual business from £11 million to £15 million? And my second question would be, 27B, it wants us to invest in businesses within County Durham, encourage regeneration and economic development. I really welcome this. Durham County Council is doing something proactive to stimulate growth of local businesses. But another way of supporting local businesses and helping them grow is actually using their services and buying the products that they make. But the council's constitution restricts us, and I use that word very carefully, restrict rather than prevent, restricts us from using businesses outside the council. Why is the council choosing to invest and take ownership rather than using local businesses? Thank you.
George, also, George.
Yeah, and the first question, Chairman, this is about spreading this across not just the banks, where I mean, the reorbit, and lots of councils have gone down the road and other investment forms. This is about diversifying the risk. As a paragraph in the report, it does say this will only have to significant due diligence or are we willing to put the council plenty of this government to diversify those investments potentially generating worrying for the council to protect from line services? The second question on the constitution, Chairman, the report is in here, effectively to alert investment opportunities across the businesses in County Durham. There are often other discussions around how we purchase from businesses in County Durham on the one through the human strategy, and we have to talk here, remember that, if you choose.
Council Mike McGowan, please?
Thank you, Chair. Just to follow on from the previous question, having looked at the report, it is clear that the only investment that would really benefit from the increase of £4 million in Newcastle Airport is that what we are, what's being suggested as for this increase, go from £10.5 to £50 million? Are you, is there such a good return at its worth for the £4 million investment?
George, that has nothing to do with Newcastle Airport, Chairman. We will work with our advisors on what investment opportunities are available through individual investments or the property forms, which is specifically Newcastle National Airport, it's not about that.
As usual, and the last one, Councilor Bishop, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a question on paragraph thirty-two, equity shareholders. Their account of this made the title of third person march, zero, one, seven, four, five, I may have missed some, but that title also happens to some of which could cost the guy, so without explaining that, please, thank you.
Yeah, of course, you know, this is reflecting the transfer of the council's data to equity share, and the credit clause approved by the House of Commons.
There's no other questions? Can I ask Councilor Neipie to mind the floor, please?
Chairman, I think it's been quite eloquently answered by the director. When treasury management reports, they're really about transparency. It's about how we are transparent, how we manage the resources that are available, or I should say, actually how we manage the public's money, that's what this is all about. And in the main, the two threats to this is the capital finance requirement, which is the underlying need, what we need to borrow to make sure that we deliver the capital activity that we've identified as a council. The other one, on the investment strategy, and I'll remind members of what has happened to this council over the last seven years and why we've had to diversify, that we have seen the reduction in our ground funding year on year on year on year. Yet we've seen an increase in the cost pressures on our base budget because of the demand increasing in services, not much so than the democratic pressures on children and adults, national living wage and price inflation. And also, we do not generate enough income through the yield from council tax nor business rate. Hence, we have to make cuts, and that's been our consultation on the A nine entry sheet. We also have to make sure that we look for other investment, other investment streams to come in, so that we can protect from line services for as long as we possibly can. We're actually behind the curve with this, Chairman, compared with other authorities, who've been out of the traps quicker than us with regards to looking for further regeneration. Element of what we should talk about, that is, we've moved from low on to technically shares, and I think you understand that the process has been formed of that. So as long as we see cuts, first brought in by the coalition government, who introduced the austerity programme, where we still feel, and if you listen to what Philip Hammond said on the 22nd of November, we're going to follow the line, and I might contribute towards the motion what's coming, we're going to follow the line of America, where the Americans and Americans have now seen their income flatline for 30 years. What he said on the 22nd, we're going to see people on every journey to this country flatline for the next 20 years. So that's why we have to diversify, and that is the basis of the changes to the investment strategy, Chairman.
Thank you for that, Councilor Neipie. Can I ask Councilor Norton to report, please? Item ten, electoral boundary review and revised proposals for new parliamentary constituencies in Durham.
Thank you, Chairman. I will briefly introduce the report, but I'd just like to say I do have David Collington as the electoral services manager on hand in case there's any technical questions that arise. In September 2016, the Boundary Commission for England published initial proposals for new parliamentary constituency boundaries. The proposals were to redraw constituency boundaries to reduce the number of constituencies from 533 to 501. And every constituency with the exception of two in the Isle of Wight must have an electorate of between 71,034 and 78,507. The initial proposals for County Durham retained six constituencies, but with modification to the boundaries and consequential renaming. One constituency would remain solely within the county, and the other five would pass boundaries taking inwards from Gateshead, Sunderland and Harlech. The Constitutional Working Group considered those proposals on a number of occasions throughout 2016, and agreed to submit joint response on the basis that the proposal to separate Barnard Castle east and west was not acceptable. This appears to have been accepted by the Boundary Commission, so the revised proposals, which have now been proposed, Barnard Castle is split. Under the proposals now, for County Durham, there will be five constituencies rather than six. Four constituencies would be wholly contained within the county, and a fifth would take inwards from Stockton-on-Tees. Six existing county divisions would become part of constituencies administered by Gateshead, Newcastle-on-Tyne, Sunderland or Harlech. And details of the constituencies as in boards are set out in paragraph thirteen onwards in the report. So this current consultation by the Boundary Commission is a final consultation, which closes on the 11th of December. There is no provision within the regulations for further public hearings or an opportunity for people to comment on representations that are received from others. And the focus of the Boundary Commission on this consultation is in respect of the constituencies that have been revised since the initial proposals. Again, the Constitutional Working Group considered the revised proposals and resolved to propose that council submits an objection to the proposals, noting that the revisions are not in line with the earlier ones, and that those concerned haven't conceivably responded within the timescale proposed. And the draft wording of the letter that is proposed to be submitted is set out in appendix two. And recommendations, Chair, are set out at paragraph thirty-three and thirty-four to submit the letter as set out.
Thank you for that. Councilor Norton, please, report.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm very happy to include the recommendations as per the first of all, submitting an objection in the strongest possible terms to the Boundary Commission for England's revised proposals for new parliamentary constituencies across County Durham. That objection has been set out in appendix two. The revised proposals are a dramatic change from the previous proposals set out by the Boundary Commission for England as they have been in County Durham. The county now reduces only four whole constituencies with parts of another four. So as we've heard, Seirfield would be linked with Billingham in Stockton-on-Tees, Blackhall and Wingers with Hartlech, Seir with Thorpe and Sunderland, and Burnfield and Dipson with Blaydon in Gateshead. This would leave us with a share in eight separate constituencies from the five council areas, and would tear apart numerous non-established counties. The existing Durham city and Eddington constituencies would be torn into several parts. Indeed, Durham city would be dismembered into no fewer than five proposed constituencies, possibly some source of records. Chairman, it is all completely unsatisfactory and made even worse by the lack of any further public hearings as we've heard at this stage in the process, giving very little opportunity for local people to object to these changes. I hope that as a council council, we can put political differences aside and send the strongest possible message of objection to the Boundary Commission, and hope these proposals never come to fruition. I move the recommendations.
Thank you. Another second of these?
Yeah, Chair, I'd like to follow the second bit. And really, the reason for doing that is the massive changes that have come about in this set of proposals from the ones that we consulted out of the public. Now, I would like to get, if we went out and spoke to the public now, 90% of them would have no idea that the implications of this are, indeed, I spoke to some people last week from my division, who had no idea that it was going to end up, this whole group was saddling and testing through, when we live in mind how to tell a county H1 post code, which is, and that's just one example. We look at all the others, where the values of communities that are low established would have no links anywhere else, and to do something on this scale, on a four week consultation, that is neither him nor there consultation, and with no opportunity for the public to respond in person, for anyone to listen, I think we have to, and I would ask everyone to support this and this letter that we have to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Monday. Book one, question, Councilor Bishop, please?
Thank you, Chairman. So it should be somewhat of a non unanimity here, but I don't think we can support an outright rejection of the proposals. As has been explained, the last proposal was the main effect of the splitting of Barnard Castle and Tees there, with my division, Barnard Castle West going into a seat with a stretch on Ballast Hill, right away to Blaydon, and I, as a campaigner, very heavily against that. And I'm pleased to see the Boundary Commission listened to that and has restored it into a visible constituency with the minor district in the name of the addition of Wellingham. So this set of proposals rectify that problem, which is still doing, it has obviously created other issues elsewhere, and in particular, the splitting of Durham city is one of those issues, and my colleagues in the City of Durham are very happy about that. Of course, there are those who think that this review doesn't really matter because of the competition of the House of Commons and President of Parliament, which I'm due to regret it, but this review will be kicked into the long grass anyway, along with some chance that perhaps will run out of long grass, who knows? But as I have simultaneously liked it, supporting Boundary Commission's proposal to ease the bishop altar and reject the whole set of proposals, we will not be supporting this recommendation. I am quite happy to include in my submission to Boundary Commission the concerns about the city of Durham under the Durham seats. As has been outlined, the holy grail, which was achievable, is something that doesn't end up in any kind of community, but they haven't been able to do that. But as I say, if the start of the Yorkshire board and work up, rather than the Scottish board and work down, that would be achieved. Thank you, Chairman.
No other questions? Can I ask Councilor Norton to report, please? Thank you. Item eleven, notices on motion. We have one motion for today's meeting, and motion will be displayed on this screen. Can I invite Councilor Sirtease to move that one, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, council, our fellow citizens, our face, everything is important for the work done for therapy, and this is important. In that time, our staff continue to ensure that we continue to provide high quality services across County Durham. The Science Company recognise our dedication to our staff, providing them with a clear right, that that commitment to work in close, and their contribution to our stroke work last year, have provided the funding from copper pay rise at A17. And you see, the ACP has fallen by 21% since 2010 in winter, and our staff plan a three year pay bring from 2010 to 2012. This actually equates to work as an income of anywhere in reaching of £2,000 or whatever. It's time to call it back, lies the contribution of our staff making to ensure our services might cross a lot of common workforce and efficiently under extremely difficult circumstances. Our last fall, and as this council, we value the contribution of our staff to support the motion. And I leave that alone. This council supports the NGSC pay claim for 2018 submitted by U S F G M A United on behalf of council and steel workers, subject to the additional costs being incurred for in future local government and associated funding campaigns.
Thank you for that. Is there a second of the motion, please?
Yep. Thank you, Chair. I'm more happy to second this motion. As my colleagues, certainly, have set out, our staff have worked with the technical staff for far too long. The trust will have agreed to buy the agreement as clear, and this time we give the firm the staff a break. And also, and the rest of the representatives, both staff that have processed and struggled with clearing the layout. We are hoping the staff will be right alongside Henry Jeff, Alex, and Amy Jeff, Aries, recognise here with the name of the group now, still in this. And also, to reflect the three different jobs they do in the workforce classes. In time, in a day, it is imperative this would be, for the NGSC... In the title of the study, it is imperative this would be, and the NSE FPI has not seen in class on the cost of the research. Three of these shows, and in any time, we are dealing with a bunch of good year on year, year on. All that this council should thought to make, and I'm happy to second it, that is.
Thank you, that. I'd like to have a push to speak on the motion, and I'll put Council, Richard, down first.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, it's apparent that the intent behind this motion is to ask the government, we need more money to help the government to enable us to pay more for our workers who have paid the strength for a long time. But it doesn't actually say that, does it? It might be the intent, the motion should be spell out what the pay plan is. And this is the first time in life of the local government that anything about pay claims, which are negotiated in the last year, has been drawn to full council. And I'm not sure that undermining the employer's side of negotiations is the right way to go about it. There'd be a quote from the chairman of the employer's side, and that committed councillor Sean Taloney, who was the later councillor from Luton, who said that we recognise that public sector workers have had a lot of average pay awards for a few years now, but the local government continues to face significant challenges, so we are surprised that the unions are seeking such ambitious pay award. Local government has lost more than half a million jobs in recent years, and meeting this claim would result in many more such job losses. What is the claim, actually? Well, the motion doesn't say that, but it's actually claimed for five percent. My understanding is the following meeting of the MJC last week, two percent offer, covering over the next two years, is on the table, and that is going out to the unions this week. I don't think that an intervention like this by ourselves is helpful at this time. We want to ask the government for more money, that's what we should be doing in a different sort of frame of wording for this. And we all have a lot of sympathy for our lowest-paid workers, particularly those who aren't on incremental points, most of the opposite, the members aren't on incremental points, so the actual headline annual pay inflation, there's only part of the annual pay increase that they get. So we do have sympathy for those most paid workers, but I don't think undermining the local negotiating side and the national negotiating position is the way to do it, quite frankly. And for that reason, I feel that this motion should be rejected.
Thank you, Council, Hopka.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to note the motion without notice to adjourn this debate. As I say, based on the fact, and I'm quite disappointed, as long as, to a per the motion, without any detail, we're being asked to support a motion with no financial implications for the council in the short term or long term. We sit here, and year after year, being told that when we put in costs, we then have to account for them, year after year after year. So why do we support what's wanted to be achieved here in giving our employees pay rises? I have no problem with that sentiment, but we have no detail. And without the detail, so what I'm asking is to adjourn the debate, and this motion come back to the future council, the detail behind it, and to what it's going to cost. We know that by agreeing to this pay plan, that it's going to remove spinal points on the pay scheme, so we need to know what that involves. But that's all because we have researched it, not because we think of that information this morning.
Is that the first second, please? Do you legal about an expedient procedure, then?
Thank you, Chairman. So now we've had a motion without notice, we'll move to debate whether or not this motion is adjourned to allow further information of debates we provided at a later date. We can only deal with this motion at the moment. Once we've determined that, we'll either move back to the substantive motion, if the item will be adjourned off, or we'll deal with any further amendments. Thank you.
Commissioner. Chairman, I'm, when we go through this business, I think that we need to go back to what the motion says, and just following on from the mandate. Let's say that the additional cost being provided for in future local development and associated funding settlements means to be funded from the centre, so no additional cost to this council, that this will be funded from the centre, not from the council itself, Chair. And just another element on that, where, which is said that we're alone on this, actually, Newcastle, Gateshead, Sunderland, Redcare, and many authorities across the country have already submitted this motion and endorsed it, Chair.
Council, Hopka.
Chair, when I seconded it, I didn't speak. I'm glad to speak now, thank you. Chair, I understand what Council, David, says, but when it says it will be funded at central government cost, how could that be when we don't know what the cost will be? You abolish five spinal points from the pay scale, what are the knock-on effects of that in terms of all the contracts within this council? Because we know that you can't change spinal column points without knock-on effect. So are we actually asking that we create this bill, and then send it to government, and they pay it, and we create it in a vacuum, having decided it today, when we had no information on when to decide it? And it would be irresponsible of us to vote for this motion as it stands, as both Council Bell and Council, Hopka, have said. Everybody in this chamber has sympathy with the lowest-paid members of local government. But it won't just affect them, it will affect the whole of local government, and therefore you have to analyse before you pass. If we pass this motion, and if the portfolio of all the supporters pass again, then we cannot be expected to take seriously any future decision which we're asked to make, because analysis apparently is going out of window, we'll almost be in truck world.
No one speaks, being, yeah, so can I ask Council, Serkis, please? Just to reply to the amendment to the motion. Right, that's the case, we move the ball, please.
Okay, members, so this is a vote on whether the substantive...